Okay, it's six o'clock. The planning and zoning, Cape Canaveral Planning and Zoning Meter will come to order. A short courtesy note here. As a courtesy to all attendants, should this meeting run into eight o'clock or beyond, a short recess will be called at or about that time. For the public record, for all speakers, speak clearly and directly into the microphone in order that your voice will be recorded and heard by the virtual attendees. For virtual attendees, during public participation portions of the meeting, click your hand icon in the upper right-hand corner of your screen and unmute your microphone. And when it's your turn, the staff will unmute you here and advise you that you're live. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name, residence, use proper decorum. The board may choose to respond to your comment and/or move on to the next comment until all have been heard. And the staff will be monitoring the raise hand function on the screens here so that you'll be noticed. The questions function or not be monitored. See, all right, we've called over. We have read the announcement. We're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Present.
Ms. Gentilpore?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Stroud?
Here.
And Ms. Denny?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I'm noticing on the agenda there's no old business. Well, let me back up to public participation. We read the announcement. About three minutes, use your hand on the screen to indicate your need to ask a question and/or speak. The staff will be monitoring that, so you won't be ignored. Under new business, we have approval of the meeting minutes from October 28th. You have had those minutes in your email. Are there any additions or corrections or comments to those meetings?
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the last meeting as written.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Please call, roll.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentilpore?
For the motion.
Dr. Miller?
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For the motion.
Motion passes. Okay. Tonight, we're going to talk about comprehensive plan amendments, and we'll consider ordinance, ordinance is one through eight. And actually, there'll be a one, a two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Okay. Some of them have double numbers as we get down into it. All right, next up, then we'll go to first ordinance. And before we do that, we'll have David take us through the game plan on page one. David?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Ms. Suppanaut, Brenda is going to, our city planner, is taking the lead on this project, and I really, really appreciate it because it's been a major effort. And what you're seeing in front of you tonight is just the first bite of a much larger apple. But Brenda is going to lead us through the conversation this evening, so thank you, Brenda.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Brenda Depose Suppanaut. I am the city planner with the City of Cape Canaveral. And I have been working on this project along with Dave and Anthony for quite a while, so I'm very excited to get this part of it underway. Tonight, we're talking about eight different ordinances that are going to affect parcels that are currently being used as either public recreation or conservation in the City of Cape Canaveral. Next slide, Anna.
Thank you. So I'm going to start by showing everyone what our current zoning map looks like. If you're not familiar with it, this is the map that we've been using since 2008. So twelve years later, not much has changed. Next slide. And then, again, this is our future land use map, another map that we've been using since 2008. Now, if you note the differences really quickly, we'll get to one where we compare them all side by side. But in the first one, there's not much of this green, and these are the areas that we're going to be talking about. But first, we're going to take a step back and kind of look at our historic maps, and I'll step you guys through those really quickly, and then I'll start digging into how we got to where we are. Next slide. So this is our map from 1964. Now, the colors are a bit different from our current map, as you'll see, but what we're going to focus on mainly is the corridor along North Atlantic. And regardless of the colors, the thing you need to know is that most of that corridor since 1964 has remained commercial in zoning. Next slide. Same thing, all of the corridor along North Atlantic is commercial. Next slide. Next. Next slide, Anna. Thank you. All right, keep going. And next. So we're back to 2008. Okay, so we're back to 2008. So essentially, what happened is in 2016, we made some changes to the C1 zoning district. And those changes resulted in us taking out some special exception uses. And in doing that, we realized that we had a number of parcels, about 700, that were non-conforming. And a lot of these structures were residential in nature. But when we were going through these parcels, we also realized that we had a lot of public uses that were improperly zoned. So that's what we're talking about mostly here tonight, is that Phase One, if you will, the parcels that we are already using to include this building, and then some of our other parks as a public or recreational use, and then those that we're using as conservation. So in 2006, like I said, we made some changes to our city code, took those uses out. The result of that was us realizing where we needed to be versus where we were. So in 2019, we did a workshop, and I think most of you were in attendance, and we sent mailers to the individual property owners that would be affected. And it ended up being standing room only when we did that. And we realized that, again, in doing that, not only were the residential uses going to be affected, but we had a lot of public and recreational uses that we needed to address. So one of the issues we also realized is that primarily along this port of North Atlantic, we have, as we said, the current zoning is C1, but the uses do not actually reflect the current zoning. A lot of the parcels in that corridor are residential in nature. In addition to that, we spent a number of resources and time improving the pedestrian facilities on North Atlantic. So it's not really appropriate anymore for us to consider that as a commercial corridor, especially since we know a lot of the development is happening along A1A as a result of our economic overlay. Historically, North Atlantic, I believe, was the main thoroughfare for the city, but now that's not the case, as we know. So the result is a patchwork of these uses, and now we're trying to find a solution for that, which is in chunks doing rezoning. Next slide, Anna. So this is a more accurate reflection of what's going on on the ground. This is, as of today, this is the most, I would say, up-to-date map of the actual uses that are occurring in the city. And as you see, along that corridor, we start to chip away a lot of that red, and it turns to a lot of yellow, and then we see a lot of that green, which are the uses we're talking about specifically tonight. Next slide. And then this is a nice overview, I think, so you can kind of see the progression of how we got here. One of the other issues we realized is that we have a lot of properties that are zoned one way, and then our future land use is zoned another, and those aren't marrying up. So one of the things we're also doing is recognizing those uses that are already depicted on our future land use. So we'll recognize those, and then we'll recognize some of them that are not depicted. For example, we have a number of new parks, like Wagner Park, that is indicated right now as commercial, so we'll be attempting to change that this evening. But it won't affect some of the parcels that are already green. We're going to keep those as they are to reflect the future land use as it is right now. And the map on the far right, like I said, is the more current reflection of what's actually happening on the ground. And then the last slide is the actual parcels that we're talking about this evening. You guys have in your packet a better view of them, more zoomed in with the parcel ID so you can easily identify them. But that, in a nutshell, is what we're addressing here this evening. Do you guys have any questions? Oh, I think I'm supposed to recommend something.
Say again. You were going to what?
So, I'm sorry.
Well, let me make a comment here. So tonight, we're going to talk about all the green areas on the screen tonight.
Correct.
Later, we're going to come along and talk about yellow areas along the corridor.
Yes.
That's our next phase, but this is the first phase.
Right. So this is Phase One. We're trying to do it in chunks or in steps, but the goal is to rezone all seven-plus-hundred of these properties that ultimately have either residential or conservation or public use currently, but that's not reflected in our zoning map as it stands today.
Questions for the board? Just looking around, I'm going to ask a question. Are any of you, or all of you, familiar with the land use planning, land use map? If you're not, that's okay. Raise your hand if you don't know what that is. Future land use in the process. Have you been involved in that in your other activities?
I've just looked at it. I haven't.
Okay. Once upon a time, the state of Florida said, "You've got to plan your land use. Then you've got to zone to fit your land use." And so the first step we're talking about tonight is land use planning. So when we start making these motions and recommending for each of the parcels, we're going to be talking about first, the planning map. We're going to recommend a change to the planning map because it has to be put through the official process. And then we're going to change, recommend a zoning change to match it if it's needed. So that's just education. I take a little bit of the mystery about this, land use versus zoning. You've got to make your zoning look like your land use. You cannot change zoning unless you have planned the land use. Okay. Education over. Move on.
Okay. So to that point, the meeting that we had, the workshop that we had in 2019, you actually were in attendance, and like I said, it was standing room only, and we had a lot of discussions. I think you have a lot of historical knowledge on kind of how we got here also. But for whatever reason or other, we never changed our zoning or our future land use maps to kind of reflect the changes in real time. You know, we've been using the same map for over 10 years now, and so we're in a position right now where things aren't marrying up. And to your point, we need to make sure we reflect those things accurately. And so that's what these eight ordinances are attempting to do, the first of many, I hope. So as of tonight, staff is recommending approval of the ordinances, one through eight. If you guys have any other questions or want to go back to any maps, just let me know.
Well, I have a question. Do you intend to go through each one of them tonight? Or are you just asking to give a blanket recommended for all land use changes and then all ordinance changes?
One of them tonight, have the board act on each one of these ordinances individually?
We have slides of each of the...
Yes.
the first ordinance, it's back into the ordinance about four or five pages, and you can see the specific parcels that are being affected by this particular ordinance. They're all along the river. The northernmost piece is a large piece, and then we have the two city parks that are south of that.
... correct.
I do know that the port was notified, and they were provided a copy of the ordinance. So I can go so far as to say I know they're aware of it, and they have the copy of the ordinance.
So the Port Authority, excuse me, I'm sorry. The Port Authority owns that parcel of land furthest to the west?
The north.
Is that north?
Yeah, going up the page. Yep.
Yeah, but actually, north and west?
Oh, yeah.
Geographically?
To the west of Astronaut.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So why are we considering that at all?
Because that is in the city limits of Cape Canaveral. And as Anthony just...
Oh, okay. I guess.
Yeah. And as Anthony just said, to a point, these are housecleaning ordinances. We're trying to clean up our zoning map to make it consistent with our future land use map. And as Anthony and Brenda both have indicated tonight, that one has to follow the other. It's the law, basically. And the future land use map, as Lamar indicated, it's a mandated, state-required document, and it rules the zoning. And so we're cleaning it up, but we're trying to.
That land use map gets sent to Tallahassee for approval, doesn't it? So that's where the state has the clutches in us. You must plan your land use. And there is a land use document that we have, and you'll be using in the future here. But that's what the state requires us to plan the land use and document it. Once you plan your land use, then you can come along and zone. But you cannot just wiggity-wip zone land left and right without planning the zoning.
Yeah. The city was required to what's called transmit this comp plan, as well as all of the future land use maps and all of the different, just, we had to send it to the state for their approval, is what Lamar is talking about.
And what we're looking at in front of us is the comprehensive land use plan that we're making official.
Yeah. Yeah. We're bringing our zoning into, making it consistent with our future land use map. Yes.
Yeah, and this is not a mistake. This is not an emergency. It's just something you've got to do from time to time. Plan your land use and then marry up the zoning. Go ahead.
I believe that is it for this particular ordinance. I think that really concludes our presentation on what this particular ordinance is all about, what it's going to affect. I would just turn it back over to the chairman for public input and see if anybody else wants to talk to it. If there's no questions by the board.
Okay, well, I'll ask the board first. Are there any questions or comments about this land use planning? Okay. So then I'll ask if, do we have any hands-up indications on the virtual attendance?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready then to, what? Mr. Chairman? Do you hear the actual ordinance change and motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you can discuss it amongst the board, and then if you're comfortable with it, you can make a motion and either approve it or deny it, or whatever the board would like to do with it.
Okay. Well, the next little bit of paper you have under that map is the ordinance itself with the big arrow print. And that's what we're going to move on and recommend to the council and make that map We didn't have any comments. I didn't receive any discussion. I'm going to ask one more time. Any more discussion about this process? All right. Then we'll ask for a motion to recommend approval of this ordinance 2021 to the city council for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 02-2021 as written.
Actually, it's 01-2021. They inadvertently put up 02 on their screen, so you might have got confused.
Okay, that's clear. 01.
Yes. 2021.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We've discussed it, and as I told you before, once we have a motion, I'm not going to ask for any further discussion unless you feel you've got to do it. Then interrupt me.
I have a question. Mr. Price, I know that you made the motion, and was it... Okay, thank you.
Okay. The motion for approval of ordinance 01-2021. Okay. And now we're asking for a vote of four ordinance to recommend to the council.
Mr. Russell? Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentilpore?
For.
Dr. Miller?
For.
Mr. Stroud?
For.
And Ms. Denny?
For.
Okay. Now we move to the next. I'm having to manage my sequence here.
Ordinance 02-2021.
That's correct. Now we're going to move to that map. Exhibit A for that ordinance. Go to your map, and we'll have, whatever input the staff wants to give us on that.
Okay. So this ordinance is another rezoning ordinance, proposing to change the city zoning map. There are several properties that are owned by either the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, or the Brevard County School District, and it's related to lands that currently have a future land use map of public recreation. And they're currently being used by these governmental agencies for either public or recreation uses within the jurisdiction or limits of the city. So this zoning ordinance proposes to change the zoning map for these properties to public recreation, again, to make the future land use map consistent with the zoning map. The properties in question are commonly referred to as the old city hall complex, and the sheriff's office, the city recreation center, city library, wastewater reclamation facility, Capeview Elementary School, Cherry Down Park, Canaveral City Park, and the southern portion of Manatee Sanctuary Park. And there's some city property, park property located along 200 Long Point Road, which is Patriot's Park. Again, this ordinance would propose placing a public recreation zoning designation on those properties, consistent with their existing use and consistent with the future land use map.
And Mr. Chairman, I would only add that, there again, Brevard County, as well as the Brevard County School District, were provided copies of the ordinance, so they are aware of it. They were noticed, went through proper notice, and the parcels that are in question, again, are shown on the monitor on your screen. If you have any specific questions, we'd be happy to respond.
Okay, again, any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I do have one.
Identify yourself for the people out in the outlands listening.
Stephen Stroud, Board Member Stephen Stroud. My question pertains to Patriot Park. When I take a look at that on the Brevard County property appraiser site, and also look at any images from maps, I see that the park extends over to an area that's not identified on the appraiser's site. It's not even shown as a parcel. But if you look at this thing, you will see that the park is, there's a lift station at the end of that street. There's also the garden, the garden area there, public garden area. Since this bleeds over into that, why wasn't this part of that? Is that the fact that it's not identified in any shape, form, or fashion on the appraiser's site? There's nothing assigned to it. In reality, it looks like it's probably a street at one time, or potentially it's designated as a street.
It was. That is correct. So it's not actually identified as a parcel, but the city has ownership.
But the park bleeds over into it, so it's not going to be part of this ordinance? I mean, it cuts right down the middle of the sandlot there.
It is. It is part of the ordinance, but the actual parcel, there's no parcel identified for that little chunk, if you will. It used to be a street, from my understanding, but it's under our ownership. Or it's under, you know, I don't know when that occurred. I can't speak to that, but it's been under the city's property, and we have been using it as such for a number of years.
But when I did my due diligence, I went to the property site and looked at each and every one of these, and looked at ownership of every one of them. And that is specifically not marked on the appraiser's site, so...
Because I think they consider it still as a roadway. I don't think it's ever been appraised potentially as a piece of property, but...
And it can't be used as a road because we've got a lift station sitting in the middle of there besides the garden.
The lift station is off of Long Point. So it's south of that.
But it's still part of that property that's unidentified, and that's all I'm pointing out, is that's not identified as part of the park. But you drive up to it, it looks like part of the park.
Yeah. I can't answer for that, or how the property appraiser looked at that piece. I don't know the history on that.
Would it be a possibility that it could be added to Patriot Park and dangerous part of the park?
Brenda, is this property, is it considered right-of-way?
I think it may be considered right-of-way, is the thing also.
Yeah. If it is considered right-of-way, then we'd have to dig into that a little bit deeper because, you know, we don't go in and zone in future land use our city rights of way. They're just, they're just... understanding, but it's under our ownership, or it's under, you know, um, we, we've, I don't know when that occurred, I can't speak to that, but it's been under the city's property and we have been using it as such for a number of years.
Well, when I did my due diligence, I went to the property site and looked at each and every one of these, uh, and, and looked at ownership of every one of them, and that is specifically not marked, uh, on the, on the appraiser's site, so.
Because I think they consider it still as a roadway, I don't think it's ever been appraised potentially as, as a piece of property, but.
And it can't be used as a road because we've got a lift station sitting in the middle of there besides the, uh, the garden.
The lift station is, is, is off of Long Point, so it's south, it's south of that.
But it's still part of that property that's unidentified, and that's all I'm pointing out is, that's not identified as part of the park, but you drive up to it, it looks like part of the park.
Yeah, I, I can't answer for that or how the, the property appraiser looked at that piece, um, I don't, I don't know the history on that.
Would there be a possibility that it could be added to Patriot Park, uh, and that's dangerous part of the park?
Brendan, is, is this property part, is it in, considered right of way?
I think it may be considered right of way, is the thing also.
Yeah, if, if, if it is considered right of way, then we'd have to dig into that a little bit deeper because, you know, we don't go in and zone in future land use our city rights away, they're just, they're just there. Um, so if it is, if this area that you're talking about is still considered right of way, if it's never been vacated, that's which takes a spec, which takes a specific action by the city council, then it's, it would be considered right of way, so, um, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing that that's what the case is here, that's why it's not showing up as a parcel by the property appraiser's office.
Yes, like I said, I think they consider it like roadway and right of way to Dave's point, so wouldn't necessarily be indicated as.
And these are the answers I did expect to get from, uh, from, uh, the city on this, but, uh, just wanted to clarify and make sure that, that we all understand that that's, situation does exist, again, the park is led over into that right of way, and so is, so is the, uh, garden. All right. No further questions?
Okay, my question is, uh, the chair questions, is it identified satisfactorily? To everybody's satisfaction? Does the staff need to go back and do anything with this to bring back, uh, any additional information?
I don't think so because we're identifying the parcel, um, and not the right of way, like I said, so as it stands, we're looking at this particular chunk of property that is identifiable, we'd have to go back and.
I, I think it, it, perhaps the solution, Mr. Chairman, is, is that we go, that, that we, we would ask the board to go ahead and take action on this this evening, um, but we would take a look at, we'll revisit this particular area, if there is portions of the park that are being used as park, um, then we could, we would have to go to the council and get them by, I think it's, I think it's resolution, I'm not sure if it's resolution or ordinance, to vacate that right of way, so, um, that, that would be a kind of a further effort in this particular case, but we'll, we'll certainly check into it.
Okay, so the action we take tonight then is to recommend approval of an ordinance that identifies Patriot Park and puts it on the map, and then if there's any question about right of way and lift stations, we'll address those later.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Did I get that right? Steven, you okay with that?
I am just fine with that, again, I felt an obligation if we didn't want that out.
Good work. All right, any other questions or comments? Now I'll ask if any other, if there are any public, uh, input from the internet?
No, not at this time.
Okay, uh, here are nothing, um, we'll ask for a motion for approval or disapproval to recommend this to the council.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Uh, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Russell?
Four.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore?
Four.
Dr. Miller?
Four.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
Four.
Okay, and so what we've done here is, uh, we're gonna approve the, put these parcels, identify them on the zoning map. All right, we go next to.
The next, the next ordinance is zero three dash twenty twenty one, this, um, ordinance is a proposed amendment to the future land use map. The parcel in question, it's one parcel, it's located in the uppermost northeast corner of the city, it's owned, currently owned by the Port Authority, it's commonly referred to as the southern portion of, um, Jetty Park, that property currently has a future land use map designation of R three residential, the proposed ordinance would amend the future land use map to give it a public recreation, um, designation, uh, consistent with, uh, its existing use as a, as a public facility slash park.
Again, this, this parcel is owned by the port?
Correct.
Okay, it just happens to be in the city, all kinds of people own stuff in the city. All right, uh, now we're getting to the ordinance. Well, first of all, I'll ask for any questions from the board?
Thank, I have a question, so you're saying, right now, it's in the future planning, it's zoned as R three?
Correct.
And so this, in order to approve this ordinance, we would have to change the future, uh, zoning, uh, future planning map?
To public recreation.
Yeah.
This ordinance that we're acting on now is a land use map change, is that correct?
Correct, the future land use map change.
All right.
The current, the current, the current use is inconsistent with the current future land use map designation.
All right, so we're allowing to amend the land use map to reflect this, do we come along later with an ordinance change? Is that next in our stack?
I, I, I think, I think tonight's action, this, this particular ordinance that we're asking the board to move on tonight, will clean, clean it up entirely, um, because the, um, the.
The next, the next ordinance deals with the zoning, this is just gonna deal with the future land use map, you have a situation where the park, where this, this property has been historically used as a park, it's been used as a park by Brevard County, the property was conveyed to the port, it's currently being used as a park, it's always been used as a park, so the use is inconsistent with both the future land use map and the zoning map of the city, which are both designated resident, R three residential. Both ordinance zero three dash twenty twenty one proposes to change the future land use map to public recreation, the next ordinance that you will consider will propose changing the zoning map designation for the same property to public recreation, the two would then be consistent, I don't know, the ordinances will be consistent, but there are, both ordinances will be consistent with the historical existing use of the property. So, the two, two ordinance, same property.
Okay, we're, we're amending the land use at this time. All right?
Right, right now, both the future land use map and the zoning are incorrect, this first ordinance will fix the future land use, the next one will fix the zoning.
The next one we talk about will be a zoning one.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any questions, uh, in the internet?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. All right, it seems like everybody's, uh, questions concerned have been addressed, it's time for a motion to recommend this future land use change.
Make a motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, call a roll, please.
I apologize, but with the masks on, I don't know who's making the motion and who's.
I was having a hard time too.
Thank you, I'm sorry, we'll try, we'll try to do better.
Okay, um, Mr. Russell?
Four.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore?
Four.
Dr. Miller?
Four.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
And Ms. Denny?
Four.
Motion passes. All right, so, okay, and, and just a helpful hint, as you make your motions, just say, John Price moves, or Steven moves, or something like that.
That would be great, thank you.
All right. Okay, now we have recommended a change to the land use map, now we're going to go to an ordinance that recommends a change to the zoning map, to, to recommend this planning. You know, this is the heart of planning and zoning, this is what you're doing, is planning and zoning. All right, take us through the, uh, anything we need to know about the zoning ordinance.
Um, no, other than zero dash four dash twenty twenty one, change, the proposed changing the zoning map designation for the same property owned by the port to public recreation, and that would be consistent with your previous motion, uh, recommending zero three dash, uh, twenty twenty one.
Okay, our next motion then, we'll line them up, uh, just for the record, any questions from the board? Any questions from the public on the internet?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, please call a roll, uh, wait, wait, we need a motion, getting ahead of myself.
Susan Denny makes a motion to accept.
Michael Miller seconds.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Russell?
Four.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore?
Four.
Dr. Miller?
Four.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
Four.
Okay, then our next, uh, item is the, uh, future land use map to be amended to, uh, reflect the use of Long Point Park.
Correct, this, this is also a future land use map proposed amendment, it's zero five dash twenty twenty one is the ordinance, there's seven point eight eight acres of land in the western part of the city, it's owned by the city of Cape Canaveral, commonly known as Long Point Park, and I think it has another name too, um, the current future land use map designation on the property has a split, uh, both R one residential and conservation, the property is being used as conservation, all this ordinance, uh, does is it eliminates the split and designates the entire property conservation on the city's future land use map.
Conservation. Okay, and I'll ask, is there any questions from the board? All right, are there any questions or comments from the public in the room?
No, not at this time.
Thank you, and, uh, we'll have a motion now to, uh, recommend approval.
Mr. Chairman, John Price would like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number oh five dash two zero two one, as written.
Nancy Gentlecore, second motion.
Okay, call a roll, please.
Mr. Russell?
Four.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore?
Four.
Dr. Miller?
Four.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
Four.
Okay, we, we just recommend approval to change the land use map, now we're going to the ordinance change for zoning.
Correct, zero six dash twenty twenty one, it affects the same property, Long Point Park, seven point eight eight acres, that property currently has a zoning designation of R one residential, this ordinance proposes to change the zoning map designation to conservation, consistent with the previous recommendation that you made for ordinance zero dash five dash twenty twenty one and the existing use of the property, which is conservation, property's owned by the city, of course.
And, uh, comment from David?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a point for the board, um, this, what, what the difference between conservation and public recreation is, because that, that may be a question for some of the board members, maybe it's not, I apologize for taking, taking up some time, but typically, if you look at a piece of property that we're, that the staff is recommending, uh, for conservation, um, it is bound by, in this particular case, it's, there's, uh, we received some grant funding from the state, uh, to help pay for its, its development, and along with some of that grant funding comes conditions, um, and, um, for that purpose, uh, this particular piece of property is being shown or being proposed to be conservation, um, and, and conservation is a, you can think of it as a very, very limited recreation opportunities on it, you'll, you'll see, um, things such as paths or, uh, boardwalks, uh, very, 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 uh, not intense, uh, activity on it, as opposed to some of our parks, that, you know, you have kids playing soccer and all kinds of stuff going on there, and, and those pieces of property, you'll, you'll, you'll notice that we're suggesting we zone those as public recreation, so that's the difference between the two zoning categories, one's less intense, sometimes it's tied up with, um, conditions from the, uh, if, if we have received a grant, and, uh, um, the recreation parks are, are more active recreation, kids are doing their, doing their thing on, in those areas usually, so, just as, just as a more of a background.
Good explanation, and that was gonna be my next question, because I, I sat here, uh, yesterday and this afternoon, went all through this, and I didn't get to the, the question, what's the difference between conservation and recreation, very good, great math, all right, we're, uh, let's see, what's our next action here, this is the land use change?
Zone.
Zone, sorry. All right, any, any questions about this action we're about to take? Okay, uh, I see no questions in the room, uh, how about the internet? Any hand indications from the internet?
Not at this time.
Okay, here are none, um, let's have a motion to recommend.
Mr. Chairman, John Price, uh, ordinance, uh, make a motion that we approve ordinance number zero six dash two zero two one, as written.
Second?
Michael Miller, second, second.
Thank you.
Call a roll, please.
Mr. Russell?
Four.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore?
Four.
Dr. Miller?
Four.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
Four.
Okay, uh, next, next, we're going to, uh, talk about the future land use map change for public, we're gonna amend it to public, any concerns?
Well, that's ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty one, this ordinance involves several properties owned by the city, including the city hall complex, city fire station, uh, Bennetts Park, located on Washington Avenue, and Wagner Park located on North Atlantic Avenue, those properties have either a C one commercial or an R two residential, uh, future land use map designation, this ordinance proposes to change the future land use map designation for those properties to public slash recreation, consistent with their existing use. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, are there any comments about the land use change? I'll ask the board first, okay, seeing no, uh, in the room, no internet?
No.
Thank you, all right, now we're ready for motion to recommend.
Nancy Gentlecore, I'll make the motion to approve. Susan Denny will second motion.
Thank you, and now call a roll.
Mr. Russell?
Four.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore?
Four.
Dr. Miller?
Four.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
Four.
And then our, uh, next item is to zone this property into the proper, proper classification, and, uh, any further comment about that from the staff?
Ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty one involves the same properties as ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty one, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, this would, ordinance proposes to change the zoning map designation for all of those properties to public slash recreation, consistent with the proposed future land use map designation of public slash recreation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and any comments from the board? Here are none, seeing any comments from the public in the room?
No.
Seeing none, uh, any comments on the internet? Okay, please call a roll, oops, we need a motion. Is there a motion for approval to recommend approval?
Michael Miller makes the motion.
Is there a second?
Steven Stroud seconds the motion.
Thank you, please call a roll.
Mr. Russell?
Four.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore?
Four.
Dr. Miller?
Four.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
Four.
Okay, motion passes. All right, our next, uh, ordinance is.
I believe that's all the ordinances for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, the ordinance.
Moving on to other stuff now.
Now, we're going into site plan approval. Uh, this next bit of, uh, next piece of business. This next bit, next piece of business is a request for site plan approval for Fillmore townhouses. And I'll ask David to take us through that.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Again, this is for site plan approval. And I'm going to maybe go into a little bit more detail than I usually do for benefit of some of our newer members. And site plan approval is essentially the staff reviews what's called a site plan. It's a, and a site plan is a plan, engineered plan prepared by an engineer that addresses the city code requirements for a site plan. And you can see from the attachment that there's quite a few pages and quite a bit of information that needs to be included. And it's things ranging from landscaping to water in sewer to stormwater to driveways, make sure they're all built to city specs, specifications. And the, you can see, we're scrolling through all of the required pages right now or the included pages. It also includes a survey, includes topographic map. So this, and, and the process that we follow is we receive the application, we farm it out to our review departments. And for site plans, I think the most important review departments is our city engineer. Fire department reviews them, our public works department reviews them to make sure that, as I said earlier, that they're addressing all the criteria and meeting the minimum city standards. We have done this on this particular piece of property. As you can see from this, this page, the sheet on your, on your monitor, you can see the two separate buildings. Each building has two units in it. You can see the brick driveways running south from the building out to Fillmore. Brenda, could you find the, there should be a drainage? Oh, this is the paving and drainage, okay, I'm sorry. If the board looks at the north end of the portion of the property, you can see those hash, that hash line running east and west. That's essentially the bottom of the, a, a, a small culvert, not culvert, but a swale. And then you can see those hash lines running north, south. There's one on the extreme east and west ends of the parcel, and there's one going down the center. And those areas show the bottom of a swale. And that's what is going to be capturing and retaining the stormwater that's going to be coming off of this property. Right now, there is no stormwater facilities. It just, I'm, I'm sure the majority of this water gets, perks down into the soil because it's, it's really good soil out here. It's very sandy and a lot of it perks. If we get a really large rain event, there will be some sheet flow out into the street. It just can't perk that quickly, so there'll be some sheet flow.
Well, what, what's our requirement? We have to catch the first five inches of some kind of?
Yeah, it's, it's not quite that much. I have our, our city engineers here this evening, so we can?
I'm just asking a question for education for the board.
I believe it's the, is it for a fifteen or twenty-five year storm event, John? John, would you come up to the podium, please? I'm sorry, introduce yourself.
John Pecar, city engineer. There's several criteria that we look at for the drainage. Tried to for residential and commercial properties. The first thing is we look at some treatment of the stormwater before it leaves the property. And that's usually looking at your first one inch of your, your runoff and how well is that treated? You also look at design storms. We have a ten-year design storm for a city street system. That really means in the twenty-four hour period, you have about seven point nine inches or so of rain that could fall, and there's a distribution of that rain. If you're holding water in a, a pure retention system, not detention, but retention, we look at a twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm. That's nine inches of water being held in that period.
I've always, this is the chairman speaking. I've always gone through the progression that, kind of simple. The first X number of inches we collect in the swales. And then after we exceed that number of inches, it comes up and goes into the outfall. And it flows into the city processing system, lift stations and, and treatment. Did I get that? So the swales were to catch the first X number of inches. And after those swales fill up, it goes into the outfall, it goes into the city drainage. And I don't track there.
Yeah, we're saying basically the same thing. We look at the first, we call it the first flush is actually treated, that's what you're talking about in the swales. The overflow goes into our city system, which we also treat. Our city system is very unique at Cape Canaveral. We have outfalls that have structured baffle boxes that help retain any of the, the sediments that go out, they're cleaned on a regular basis. All of our five major outfalls have these structures on them, so it's, it, it is pretty unique. And we are going now to more of a main system. Over the last five years, we've kind of trained or changed our policies, which we don't really have in our codes. But if you look at the infiltration systems and the storage of stormwater underground, we're doing that exclusively now throughout the city in many, many of the larger projects, not this one. But, for example, City Hall has storm chambers underneath our parking lot. We contain a lot of water right there underneath the parking lot. The same thing is in a lot of the hotels. They have either structures that retain water underground where they have storm chamber type facilities. Even in our recreation, if you look at City Park, you have over fourteen hundred storm chambers under the ground.
So once that water is collected in those chambers?
It stays, most of it stays and percolates in the ground. Very little of it runs off. We're really trying to keep as much water as we can on our properties in the ground and not letting it go to the lagoon system. We, we really are making a difference on, on how we're discharging through the lagoon. We still have non-point sources, but we're, we're doing a better job every, it seems like every day. And even on our residential properties, we're developing infiltration systems with paper blocks that are porous, that drain, other materials that drain. Even in our dog parks, we're putting that in where we have good drainage on the material there that we use for the grass, it's such a porous grass. So, and even some of our mixes we're using on asphalt, there's actually porous asphalt. So there's, there's a lot of that going on. And so in this particular project, we're talking about capturing the first flush in the swale systems that they've talked about. If you look at the volumes, they went through modeling and program. And they actually are treating twice the amount that they would normally require. They, they base it on this, the cubic feet, and they have about eight hundred and fifty cubic feet that they're holding on the side where they, that's what they're required to hold. And they're holding well over twelve hundred square feet. So they're exceeding the standards on what they do around the perimeter and through the two buildings. So that's being done. So that's a good thing. We looked at those numbers, we looked at several other, of conditions. They have a small weir that's still at the north side between the two buildings that holds the water there. And then when it overflows, it goes into an inlet structure that's basically on the road right between the two buildings.
I, I think Brenda is going to put up some pictures of the stormwater system, the existing stormwater system in the area here in just a second. Okay, John, could you give me just a second? I'm going to introduce a few of these photos here. Is that all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, and just to let everybody know what we're doing here is we're just using this property, which is a good example of stormwater retention. We're using this property as a launching point to, to educate ourselves about the overall stormwater drainage. It, it's timely and it won't take long and we'll learn something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and I would, I would say that some of this information we're going to be discussing may not be germane to tonight's deliberation, but it, it is important because I know that some of the neighbors are here and it's, it's certainly an issue out there. This particular photo is just an aerial of the site in question. That's Fillmore running east, west. And then orange is just to the west of that, or to the, to the left of it on your screen, the, the main road running north, south. Next. Okay, here's just a, a little more of a close-up of that piece of property. Next. Okay, here's a street view, and I, and I want to point out one thing. If, if you look down towards the right of this screen, right at the base of those palm trees, there's a storm inlet right there. And as the chairman indicated, that is where, once the swales pop up, once the swales hit their design max, what their capacity is to hold, they're going to do what's called pop-off. They're going to start outflowing into this city stormwater system inlet right there. Next. Okay, here's just a, a view looking to the northwest. The first one that we looked at was looking to the northeast, looking to the northwest. So it's just a little bit of a different perspective. Next. All right, this is looking due west down Fillmore. You can see there's also a, a storm, storm inlet to the, directly across the street to the south of the other storm inlet. Next. Okay, here we're sitting on orange and we're looking north. And Fillmore is right there in the, in, in the middle of the, of the screen. And I wanted to show this perspective because this intersection has three inlets in it. There's one over here, just if you look at the stop sign, kind of right at the base of that telephone pole, right there on the corner. And then on both the northwest and the southwest corner of this intersection across, you know, to the west, they're, they're, they're both storminlets right there as well. And the property that we're talking about is can be seen kind of over the stop sign if you look off to the, over that little, I think that's either a little King Palm or Sago Palm or something. Next. Okay, then we get into the plans. And I think that's it, Mr. Chairman, just getting you a sense of what's going on.
That was just a good overview. And so those of you on the board here, you are interested or you wouldn't be on the board. But as you drive around, you'll have a better understanding now about all these drains and especially what the swales are doing. All they're doing is catching the initial rainfall and percolating it. And if it's too much, it's going to go into the city system. We do a good job. Overall, overarching all this is a requirement from the Indian River Water Management District that says you got to keep all your water in the city. You can't dump it into the lagoon.
Yeah, yeah, that's in, in St. St. John's River Water Management District gets involved in that as well.
Right, so we have to keep all this water. And so we had a short discussion tonight about how we collect it on the initial property. Eventually, it goes into the city system. And eventually, we keep it in the big storage chains. And eventually, we pump it out on those little purple drains and?
Yeah, reuse water.
Yeah, the reuse water, and we put it back on the yard. So that's the way we do that. Can't put it in the good. All right, I guess we beat that to death. Let's move on to, see, where are we? We are, we're getting ready to recommend. No, next thing I was going to ask is, we've got the engineers' citation or engineer's document that says everything's been met, all requirements are met. Do we have any other documents or requirements?
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I've included everything that I felt addressed all of the code requirements in the agenda packet. All I would say is that the, and I want to kind of echo what, what Mr. Pecar said is that we, we have a minimum code requirement and this particular project is exceeding that. So, but that, that does, we, we do, that concludes our, our presentation. We do recommend approval of the, of the site plan. Thank you.
Yeah, this, this package, by the way, is very well-done package. And it's a representative of how we'd like to see site plan packages. All right, I'm going to ask, site plan approval, what's our next order? Okay, we're unplanned. We're going to do a site plan approval first. So I'll ask if there are any questions from the board. Now that we've had the intense education, any questions from the audience? Yes. Come over here and go to the microphone, tell who you are, where you live. That's okay.
I meant to leave my mask. My name is Joseph Allen. I live at three zero one Fillmore Avenue, which is just to the south of that property, to the southwest, actually. And I want the board to know that any summer thunderstorm causes so much flooding on Fillmore Avenue that I can be up over my knees in water in the middle of Fillmore Avenue because of water that runs off many properties in the area. This particular one percolates very well, as you say. But I cannot imagine that any site plan is going to be able to handle all the water from summer thunderstorms, much less tropical storm that may park over us, such as one in September of two thousand ninety, that causes massive flooding for me and for my neighbors on the south side of Fillmore. Our narrator showed us there were two drains on Fillmore, one almost across from each other. Those are in front of the house, my neighbor, Mr. John R. Benson. That's where most of the flooding occurs. Those drains are completely incapable of handling a summer thunderstorm downpour. And if you allow a driveway to be built along the south side of that property, all that water is going to run down into Fillmore and exacerbate our problems. It's going to flood my carport and probably my kitchen. It's going to flood Mr. Benson's garage, and it's going to cause all kinds of problems on Fillmore Avenue. You can't drive down that street, excuse me, after it's summer thunderstorm. So I really recommend that there be some more study put into this. Mr. Pecar knows the problems out there. I have a report from him from October of two thousand seventeen, and he visited my property to examine the flooding that's caused by Fillmore Avenue. I have nothing more to say other than that. I hope you will consider postponing this or at least voting it down.
This site plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I object to it.
Well, the site plan is put forth as a plan that retains its own water, okay? It, it has swales. And if I look around the neighborhood, I don't see any other housing or apartment buildings that have the swales nor catch their own water nor retain it on their own property. So this guy is doing a good thing. He's going to retain his, his water on his property. The problem is all the other properties that don't have swales.
I hope that that is the case, Mr. Chairman, that, that the water that does fall on that property stays on that property. But it occurs to me that there are some driveways, according to the diagram there, that look like that water is going to come right down those driveways.
Okay, time's up.
Thanks.
Thank you for your input. Where's Hamlet?
Mr. Chairman, could I add something? Would it be all right if I added something?
Go ahead.
Yeah, two things. First of all, I want to mention that I believe that these paper bricks that are going to be used in the driveway as well as the sidewalk are porous. They're going to be porous material. So it's not going to be like a, a, a concrete driveway where everything just she flows off to. These are porous, this is porous material. I'm not going to say it's going to get all the water, but it's going to get a lot of it. And the other thing that I want to mention is I feel for the residents out there. I've seen the flooding out there and it's, it's, it's bad. But it's a separate issue from what we're talking about this evening. I would like to introduce into the record and specifically to the neighborhood that I had a conversation with our public works director, our capital projects director and our city manager late this afternoon. And the city manager has given the go-ahead to initiate some additional stormwater improvements in this specific area to help alleviate the, the flooding. I'm not going to get into the details of it, but they are, there's going to be some additional improvements made out there. You know, can we solve? You know, can we solve all the flooding problems out there? No. I mean, it seems to me like we're starting to get more numerous and more intense weather. Um, whether that's my imagination or whether that's true, I don't know, but it, it, I think the flooding seems to be getting worse. Um, but we are, we do recognize the problem. We're taking steps to help address it. And, uh, but I do want to caution the board that I, I, in, in my opinion, this is a kind of a, a separate issue from the, the site plan this evening.
Okay, well, point of order, we need to come back to the site plan discussion and not a broad discussion of flooded water and drainage in the city. That's a, that's a subject that we've got to put time and effort on, but not on this item. Good lead-in, good segue into the total problem. But this guy is a good guy. He's retaining his own water on his own property, according to the, uh, the requirements for retaining initial downfall. So, okay, this is what we'd like to do to all the properties in town. If, if you think about it, everybody ought to have a swale in their backyard that you don't see now. But anyway, another subject. I'm going to now ask if there are further comments from the board about this site plan.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We have someone with their hand raised at this time, John Benson.
Go ahead.
John Benson, you are now live. You have three minutes.
Hello, this is John Benson. Uh, I live on three oh three Fillmore. Uh, we have lived in this house for thirty-four years, and yes, it floods in front of my house. I'm right across the street from said property. I totally agree with Mr. Downing about the situation. If you can delay or at least look at this a little closer, it would really, I would appreciate it also. Um, like I said, I've been there for thirty-four years. The flooding, when it rains, it rains. We've had some, you, the city did some work on Orange, increased the size of the underground pipe. I think it's, it's, that's a good thing, but it seems like we're getting more of, I'm not sure what the term was. It's percolating up out of my drain, which is directly in front of my house, and the drain in front of said property. So after the rain stops, we flood somewhat, the water comes up, and it's not going anywhere. It sits there. We have a lake there. I don't know what the project is that you all plan on doing, but if anything, the underground pipes need to be enlarged or your retention area for the reclaimed water needs to be enlarged, but it's almost in my house. And we do have a problem with traffic. They come up with all this flooding, this lake in front of our houses, and they think, oh, they freak out and they have to increase their speed. Well, now we have waves breaking in my garage. And it's, it's, it, it, it's not a good situation. And I really like, and I have a question who can ever, ever answer this. How much water percentage-wise is this retention pond that's going to be over there going to retain? It's, it's got to be close to a hundred percent. It's got to be close. We can't have any more water in the road. That's all I've got.
Thank you for your input. I mean, I, I, I can take a stab at the response if that's what the chairman would like.
Can I suggest that maybe, uh, Mr. Picar can press that?
Yep.
Well, before he, while he's gathering his thoughts, think about it like this. That property, and, and we're talking about tonight for site plan approval, meets all the requirements for catching its own downpour off its own roof on its own property and putting it in its own swales. And hardly anybody else around here has any. So they're making the right start when they're obeying the requirements of the city code. Then, once those swales fill up, the requirement says, you put it into the city system, the city drainage system. And our friend who was on the internet just now says the city drainage, drainage system isn't handling anything in the neighborhood. Point taken. That doesn't take away from the fact that this property is doing all it can and all, and what it's supposed to be doing. In fact, it's doing what everybody else in the neighborhood ought to be doing. So, okay, what do you got, John? Picar?
Yeah, actually, we are looking at the problem. There's been several, when you look at drain, it's a good start at this point. You kind of look at more of the watershed, more of a bigger picture than just a single property. That's the first one. You kind of look at the way the flows go, the topography, and the way things exist with the conditions you have built. Uh, when you look at something, I was glad to hear Orange was mentioned. That line had just been enlarged. Uh, historically, we had that line with undersized pipes that caused water backup. We had pipes that were not even to our code, so that's all been taken care of all the way from Pope down past Fillmore that's been done. We also look at the property from Pierce, because right now we're dealing with the property owner there that has some drainage that goes to the north, which affects the properties we just heard about. They've had some, uh, rough gradient on their property that Dave has talked to the owner. He happens to be out of, of the area. He's in Alaska right now, from what I heard, Dave.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're trying to get that breeze out, where drainage does not go to the north on that property. Uh, vacant land, you can see it on the photograph, just where those two houses are just south where this Fillmore site is. That water has been going north. There's actually, uh, been a standing depression in that area behind those homes. So it has held water historically for some time. So we're looking at that. We're going to reduce flows there. They shouldn't be going that way to begin, so that's going to be reduced very shortly. We are looking at the, uh, thing Dave just mentioned in terms of improvement on Fillmore. We'll include both what they call an exfiltration, which is pipes that take water away from the area, away from that intersection and tie it into our new line that we have on, uh, Orange. So we're looking at doing some improvements to bring water, uh, particularly from all of the street area and bring it over, over to the, uh, the major pipes we have, which are over twenty-four inches in size. That project is just starting to be designed to help alleviate the problems as I've been mentioning. So we're looking more to the, to both the east, bringing water to the west. We're looking at order, stopping water from going to the north and holding water on the property that they were discussing today. So kind of, we're looking at kind of an area that could reduce the impact on that area. Okay, now there are some things that are hard to change. Uh, some of the homes might not be to the grades of the road itself. That's a very hard thing to change when the house is at the road level. You know, most homes in our, our city, we try to have them up higher than the road. So there's twelve inches or some are much higher than that, too. So there are some things that will be there with us, but the, uh, the, the improvement should be coming with the city. We'll be doing that under our stormwater, uh, management program. And this project should help, and then like you said, having that line, uh, just got completed within the last year on the, on the Orange County, so, uh, Orange Avenue, rather, we're kind of looking at how that performs. And that should, that should, all these things should help dramatically, and, and this should all happen relatively quick.
So what I'm hearing is planning is in the works to increase, uh, pipe drain capacity and lift station capacity in that area.
A lift station is referring mostly to the San Terre Shore. This is all storm drainage we're talking about.
Yeah, but you still got to process the storm drainage, and if you need lift stations to do that, you need to talk about it.
Yeah, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a point, important, important point that John hit on, and that is all new construction, somebody wants to build a house or anything in the city today, we require them to build it up over the crown of the road. What's happened is in this particular area, and specifically on the south side of, of, uh, Fillmore right here, some of these homes are down below the grade of the road out in front of them. And so obviously, water, as you guys all know, is going to go, it's going to follow, it's, it's going to look for the, the low area. And that's a challenge for some of these homeowners right in here. One of the things that we discussed late this afternoon is coming up with some type of a curbing or a birmingham system to see if we can keep some of that water out of, uh, from, from running down into the, onto these properties. That's going to be one of the things that we're looking at doing. So, uh, but it's, it's, you know, there's no, as I said, there's no silver bullet. You have, this is a very challenging area. This is kind of the bottom of the birdbath in this larger basin that John is talking about, and so it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's challenging. But again, these are all issues outside of the, uh, the site plan consideration tonight.
Well, okay, I, I'm going to break in now.
All right.
Take control of the right, uh, I'm supposed to keep us on the point. Point of order, this is my fault. It was straight this far, but it was a good discussion. It's good education for all of us, and we've got work to do. It illustrates the, uh, the task we've got to go do, and we've been talking about it. This is not a surprise to us. Uh, my own property suffers the same, uh, potential problem. Anyway, uh, I've asked for comments for the site plan approval. I've gotten none.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
We have, um, John Benson with his hand raised.
Would you identify, help us out here? Who, what are we doing?
This, this John Benson, he's the gentleman that has just spoke, just finished speaking. I guess he wants to speak again.
Well, he's had three minutes, and that's, that's the rule. Uh, I'm going to ask if anybody, if there's a gentleman out here who has a question, go in first. And, uh, and then we'll come back. Stand by. Uh, Lon, come up to the microphone.
Chairman and members of the board, thank you, thank you for having me this evening. I just, Chairman, I want to reiterate basically what you had to say, that we are the good guys. We are provided by all the requirements of the city, and we've gone above and beyond that. We have hired a stellar engineering firm, like, as you know, Alan Engineering, and we want to help out all the neighbors and try to do the best thing we can. There are some problems, like, like, uh, Dave said, with the lower houses, it's just going to be water fights this way there. But I also live at Harbor Heights myself. We had a little problem there. The city was good. They went in there and tried to change some things with some bigger pipes, and it is something to alleviate the problem. Because my point is that we are here to try to do the best thing for the city, stay with all the requirements above and beyond what you asked us for, and the issue here is not the site plan, it's the overall situation that we have to try to help with.
Okay.
Jim, I think we're right.
You're right, I'm playing the chips.
Yeah, I think we made it clear. This, uh, this property is obeying all the requirements. Um, now, the gentleman, uh, what, what was the gentleman that wanted to talk? Say your name again. Are you out there?
Um, yes, John Benson, the gentleman that spoke earlier has his hand raised again.
All right, I'm going to ask it this way. Uh, if John Benson will stand by, we'll finish this site plan approval or this approval. We'll finish this business, and the normal agenda is an item called open discussion. So if you'll just hang on, we'll come back to open discussion. Meanwhile, I'm going to move on to anybody that has a comment on this site plan. If it's not on the site plan, uh, we would move on. Okay, uh, we've heard all the comments. I'm going to ask for a motion for approval just.
Susan Denny makes the motion to approve the site plan as is.
Okay, is there a second?
Stephen Stroud seconds the motion.
Thank you. Uh, caller, please.
Mr. Russell? Mr. Price? Miss Gentlecore?
Four.
Dr. Miller?
Four.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Miss Denny?
Four.
Motion passes. Now, the next item on the agenda is the preliminary and final plat approval. Dave, do you want to take that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this, this particular request is, uh, regarding the same piece of property that we dealt with on the, uh, the, the previous item. Um, this is for preliminary and final plat approval. And I just want to make a point quickly that typically the city code is, is, well, the city code is set up where these are separate processes. An applicant will come through and get preliminary plat. Generally, will go out and construct the improvements and then come back and get final plat, plat, once everything is complete. Well, since this is a smaller project, it's all under common ownership, same owner. There's no public improvements, and that's the important point is there, th- this particular project does not include any new city streets, any new city, um, lift, a lift station or anything like that. This is all private improvements, and because of that, um, after discussion with the city attorney, this is being processed simultaneously, both the preliminary and final plat. Um, and if the board recommends, um, approval, we'll take that to the council, um, in, 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 as, as such. So anyway, so that was just a quick, a quick kind of back, background blurb. In, in brief, I'll keep this very brief. Uh, the property is zoned R2. Uh, we did review it against all of the city zoning and city and state plat requirements. Um, and it is consistent with all of those requirements. Uh, plat, the plat process is a very, I'm going to call it more of a legal technical review. Um, you know, com, land use compatibility and, and how it's going to affect neighbors and things like that really is not a, it's not a plat issue. It's, again, it's more of a legal, um, um, nuts and bolts kind of approval. And, uh, as such, uh, we've reviewed it that way. Uh, we, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary and final plat for the, um, uh, to, to the board. As part of the plat review, we require a title report to make sure there's no leans on the property that are going to encumber the property. Um, and we did get a, uh, a, updated title report here in the, within the last couple of weeks, I believe, it's very recent, and everything looks fine there. Um, and let's see, I'll make sure I'm hitting all the high points. Title opinion, uh, Mr. Picar, uh, also has reviewed it and is recommending approval. Um, and that's really about it, Mr. Chairman. You can see a copy of the plat that's attached, is attached to the agenda. And it shows all of the pertinent and required information. It shows the dimensions of each of the parcels. It also shows the easements that are going to be, um, recorded on the property. And as you can see from the plat, there's a utility and access easement that runs up the, uh, both through the center of the, uh, plat, on the extreme east and west ends of the plat, or sides of the plat, and then the back, um, fifteen or twenty feet is all a, a public utility and drainage easement. That's where these swales are going to be located, are in these utility easements. And one critical thing that I want to point out to the board is, on some of these smaller projects, the city is very concerned about long-term maintenance of these swales. I've seen in the past where two or three or five years from now, they don't get maintained and they disappear. Or a property owner goes and wants to put a, uh, a deck, and they put a deck up in the, in the, uh, where the swale is supposed to be, and it, it does, it's not effective anymore. So what we've done, the city attorney's worked very closely with us, is we've, uh, we're requiring binding development covenants that'll be recorded and run with the land. And these, these covenants spell out and they require the perpetual maintenance of these drainage easements. And so, um, you know, I, I, I hope that's of some comfort to the neighborhood that, uh, the, these folks are going to be required to maintain these easements. And if they stop functioning, this declaration allows the city to go in there and make the necessary improvements, uh, and we would then turn around and bill the property owners. So, uh, um, anyways, that's just a quick blurb on that. Anthony, is there anything, any highlights I'm forgetting that you want to jump in on?
Just with respect to the plat, there are declarations that are being proposed on property, but the drainage easement is also dedicated on the plat itself. So it, it'll be a perpetual drainage easement. be a perpetual drainage easement, not only for the private owners to maintain and, and use for their stormwater purposes, but the city gets a drainage easement that, that's dedicated to the city, that the city can use to inspect and/or perform emergency maintenance on the drainage swales, understanding the importance of the swales in this particular case. And in the event the city did provide emergency maintenance on those drainage swales, the plat, as well as the, as well as the declaration of covenant, provide that the city will be able to assess the cost of the future property owners, lot owners for the, for the project. And, you know, it's just a, an additional safeguard that we, we added in this particular case.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chairman. I, I just, again, to, to the residents mostly, that's something that we always don't do. We've really kind of gone above and beyond to make sure that, that, that the, this, this is, the storm waters addressed out there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We'll segue it off onto a little more education on preliminary and final plats. But that's okay. We haven't processed one in a while. Are there any questions about that approval from the board? Okay. Anything in the room, in the chambers? All right. Anything out on the internet with respect to plat and preliminary approval?
John Benson is still waiting with his hand raised for open discussion.
Yeah, we're aware of that. And we'll, when we get to open discussion, he'll be recognized.
Well, does he want to speak on the plat item?
Does anybody want to speak on the plat approval or plat approval and final plat approval?
I just don't know. You said Mr. Benson had his hand up. And I, I would just ask the person, the moderator, whether or not Mr. Benson wants to speak on the plat item because they're ready to do so.
So noted. Mr. Benson, do you wish to speak on the plat itself? Is there any technical, technicality you want to address on the plat approval?
We would have to unmute him in order to determine that. We can only see his raised hand.
Yeah, that's fine. Let unmute him. Yeah, just unmute him.
Okay.
And ask him that question.
Mr. Benson, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Is your, do you have a comment specific to the plat that the board is considering right now?
Uh, not specifically to the plat, no.
Okay. We, we, we understand your hand raised and we will get back to you in, in just a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Let's have a motion to approve or dispute, to recommend with the council.
Stephen Stroud, motions to approve?
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Susan Denny seconded it.
Thank you. All right. Call roll, please.
Mr. Russell?
For.
Mr. Price?
For.
Ms. Gentlecore?
For.
Dr. Miller?
For.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For.
Okay. Thank you. And that brings us to the end of the quasi judicial matters. Now we're into, we're to open discussion. And since Mr. Benson's had his hand up a while, we'll recognize him first, and then I'll ask if anybody else wants to talk. Go ahead, Mr. Benson.
Yeah, this is John Benson. Hello. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is John Benson.
True.
Yeah. Uh, I, I, it's been approved, but I still think it needs to be looked at a lot closer because I, I have some video, and I guess I should have brought it to present it to this hearing this evening, because on September the 28th, I watched the new plumbing that was installed on Orange there. And it, it, it really didn't do what I think you guys think it's supposed to do. I'll be real curious about what your plans are of the improvement in Fillmore. There's a lot of painted lines and looks like the city is going to be doing some kind of work out there. I'm not, I don't know what it is. But I really think somebody needs to be here when we do have one of these overwhelming rainstorms to see the problem and, and how bad it really is. And, and, and if there's any more water thrown into the existing system, I, I don't see how it's going to handle it. I, you know, and I'm not an expert on this. I know all these fellows are. But I do know that when you're at capacity and you even add 10% more, you're going to have flooding. And yes, our houses, the existing homes, they are lower because we've been, I've been here since 1986. And no, I didn't have the, the ability to raise my home to, to, to meet the crown out in front of my house. So that's why there's drainage there. It, it just isn't adequate. And, and I just, I don't know how else to say it unless, I, I got video. I'd love to show it to somebody. September the 28th, that was just a few months ago. And, and it's just not handling it. And, oh, I, I just think it needs to be looked at. We have some construction going on immediately to my, our east side now. There's got to be some retention ponds there because the footprint of that home there is three times what it was. And they did build their house up. Yeah, so now they're above the crown. Well, they're not going to have a problem when Fillmore floods, but the other older homes are going to have a problem. And, and I, I don't know what else to say other than, thank you for letting me express that. If anybody else wants to talk to me about it, go ahead. But I'm finished. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments on the internet while we're here? Any hands up indications on the internet?
No, there are none.
Okay. Sure monitor that while we talk. I'm going to ask if there's anything else in the chamber here that needs to be brought forward. Okay. We've, we've talked about it. And I assure you, the city is aware of the problem. And Mr. Benson, and, and the city engineer, as I said, they've got planning in the works. They got projects underway. And I can tell you this, my property is in the same condition. It, it floods or has flooded in the time passed. And, and the properties around me. And I've had conversations with the guys in the city staff. They patrol when, every morning, in fact, the city sends out truck patrols. And they patrol along the streets, especially during and after heavy rain. So we do have the truck patrols out there and they take notes. And so all this is going into an information collection that's going to feed toward drainage projects and in the mediation of our, of our problem. It's going to take time. Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else? I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn. While I'm getting so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any opposed? We're adjourned.